We will now call to order the final meeting of the night. For those of you that didn't have the privilege of being here since five o'clock, we've had a few other meetings. So we will call to order the regular meeting of the City Commission for Tuesday, November seventeenth. Please silence your cell phones. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mayor Owen?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Hartman?
Here.
Commissioner McGurk?
Here.
Commissioner Colleti?
Yes, here.
Thank you.
I leaned over just before. I said, "Don't take offense." It took me probably two months to quit calling him Vice Mayor and transfer it to him. So now I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to do it again, so.
It's a year late.
It's, yeah, I'm always a year behind, so. All right, with that, we will, join me, if you care to, in an invocation. And then, if you would, please remain standing afters for Pledge Allegiance to the Flag. We'll have Police Department Chaplain Thomas Prusnell to give the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the blessing of living in this wonderful city that you've just brought us to and get to experience your creation that some people only get to experience on vacation. We're so grateful for you. Lord, we pray that the folks of this community, this state, this country, and in fact, all countries, that we would turn our faces towards you, Lord, and seek you for wisdom and guidance. And, Lord, we pray that you would bless our civil servants here today, both voted and appointed, Lord, and that you put your hedge of protection around them, that you would give them the wisdom, knowledge, and discernment they need to carry out their duties. And most of all, everything that they do, may it bring you glory. In his name we pray. Amen.
Our Pledge Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kyle, any changes to the agenda? No changes, sir.
Item nine A has been withdrawn by the applicant.
Item nine A has been withdrawn from the applicant. So if you were here for item nine A, we will not be discussing that item tonight at all. They have withdrawn that. Doesn't mean it's withdrawn forever. Could come back, but just so you know, it's not on the agenda tonight. If no other changes to the agenda, we have no announcements or recognitions tonight. Although, I did want to say, the Cudas cross-country team competed at states this past week. First team in a long time to make it there. I forgot all the right stats. I meant to pull all this, my bad. But just wanted to give those, the girls' cross-country teams, some acknowledgement. Represented us well. A few of them ran their personal best at state. They ran their personal best to get us to state. They had the regionals right here in New Smyrna, and they went on to compete and made it to, made it to state. And they did not, they did not win, but they certainly won for all of us in representing us there. So, congrats to them. That's right. There you go. Public participation. This is your chance to address any item on the agenda. There's a clock over there that will give you three minutes. I ask you to be respectful of us and your fellow citizens in your speaking time. And limit it to that three minutes. If you'd give your name and address, please.
Joe DeLuback, three, five, eight, seven, Consulta Circle. I'd like to congratulate the city on the overwhelming approval of the city charter, the new city charter, 2020. Congratulations to Mayor Owen, Commissioners McGurk and Hartman on their overwhelming reelection, to Vice Mayor Sacks for his recent appointment, and thank you to Commissioner Colleti for his service as Vice Mayor during the last year. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Joe. Usually, there's like a "but" after that.
No strings attached.
Yeah, no strings attached. All right, we appreciate it, Joe. Next, he's giving us one meeting, one meeting off. Thanks, Joe. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Donna Hinkle. I live at eleven fifteen South Orange Street. And I run or head up two community help meal programs in the community here. And I just want to thank all of y'all for helping with everything that you help with. And we really appreciate the grant money that we received this year. We haven't received it yet, but we will. And I just want to thank you all for your help and support.
Thank you. Others for public participation. And just to be clear, if you're here for any of the items on the consent agenda or any of the items that are in section seven, now's your chance to speak on them. Anything in section eight, you will be able to speak at that time. All right, seeing none, we'll close public participation. Next item is consent agenda. There are ten items. We'll begin with the Vice Mayor, newly elected Vice Mayor. Anything to pull from the consent agenda?
I have nothing to pull, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner McGurk, anything to pull?
No, not at this time.
Commissioner Hartman?
B and D.
B is in Bravo, and D is in Delta? Okay, Commissioner Colleti, anything to pull?
E and J.
E is in Epsilon, and J is in?
Don't say it.
I can't go that high, guys. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding items B, D, E, and J?
So move.
I'll take a motion by Mag- McGurk, second by the Vice Mayor. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleti?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. All right, I'm, sorry, I didn't write down who pulled what. Item B, was that?
It was mine.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what I said earlier at the, at the CRA meeting was, is that, that we need to work with the neighborhood to make sure that there's no light intrusion on the residents there. I think, I think we've had some discussions in the break, and that's gonna come to pass. But I just wanted to go on the record is that we want to make sure that when we do projects like this, that we involve the neighborhood, and the neighborhood has some input to that, and that we make sure that, you know, we don't, some, a lot of these projects, we see, and we see them on paper, but we don't really see the real effect of them until afterwards. So I'd like to get this one ahead of the game, if I could, so. Okay.
Okay, the motion on item B.
Motion to approve.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item D, was that you also?
Yes. So with this item, I've had a conversation with the city manager, and he has some, I support the program a hundred percent. I, I think it needs to be done sooner than later, but I would prefer that we take the money out of the paving budget at this time to do that. And if we have money later in the year, once the paving, once we start that process, if we have some surplus funds or something, we can refund it at that time. But I would prefer that it come out of, out of the general paving budget going forward, so we could kind of get that item on the books and in the way and on, on the road, because it is, that bike path is quite hazardous for those who use that path along the south side.
Okay, we'll let Commissioner Colleti go on then. Go ahead.
The path certainly needs work. It's been there for well over twenty years. The trees are growing in it. However, to Commissioner Hartman, hopefully, our paving project is gonna be done long before we get to doing the sidewalk. And I think we have to give a little, little thought into the sidewalk work when we get around to doing actual plans and specifications. There's a few things that I don't think we've even begun to think about on this particular project, one of which, as part of our trails, or the county's trails program, a part of this path is to be part of the trails program. Granted, that will be a couple of years down the road, but it's to go down the path, then go up Aracuda, and over our new bridge whenever we get one. I would hate to spend a lot of reconstruction money within that segment of it. I'd prefer to just go over the areas where we do have the root intrusion as opposed to a wholesale reconstructing of it. Second thing is that would involve a different width of a path, and I would hate to see the money wasted for that. And one other thing we're gonna have to consider is that the Baracuda Bridge is going to be reconstructed. It's scheduled for 2022, plans to be done next year. And one of the things that that will affect significantly is the fact that there will no longer be a way for golf carts to get from the mainland over the North Causeway Bridge or to beachside at all, because right now, they have to go over to Baracuda Bridge. So I think we have to put some thought into how we do the reconstructing and make sure when the bridge is built, that we have a plan as to where the golf carts are going to go. There is a meeting coming up with DOT on December second. All the residents have gotten notice of that. I believe it's the second. And I will bring that issue up when I go to the meeting, as well as three or four others. So I do approve of this, basically just setting a funding source and maximum dollar amount. I hope when we look into these other issues, we can reduce that cost quite a bit.
Okay, Kyle, do you have comments?
Yes, Mayor. I think if we take the funding for this project out of the resurfacing, that's gonna put us back quite a bit. As we mentioned previously, throughout the years, we had a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars for the resurfacing program. And that really does not take you anywhere. We know the, the tonnage cost is so much that it just, taking it out of the resurfacing, I don't think would be a good idea. I have talked to you individually that we have a couple of options. Option one is to, we have a couple of items on hold right now in the budget that I could use to offset this project with the idea that that item will be taken out of the budget this, this year, will be put in the budget for next year. So that's option one. And option two, obviously, to go to the general reserve, which I would not recommend. So to go to the reserve or taking it out of the resurfacing, I would not recommend that. My recommendation would be to, I could find the money from one of those items on hold and use this money to do the repair for this bike path.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding Commissioner Hartman, I, I, I share city manager's concerns about that. Our street resurfacing budget was decimated. We got it up the last year or so. What is it specifically you? I won't, explain again what you would rather see happen?
I would rather fund it through the paving line item as a funding source. I mean, that's all we're doing now is approving the funding source. You know, to the effect that you can hold off buying another piece of equipment, that just puts that off another year. So if we put it off another year, then we really need it in this year's budget to begin with. We all know that the COVID numbers are going up. We all know that it's gonna have an impact on us somehow during the winter months, the colder months. If we come down to another lockdown, you know, our sales tax revenue is gonna be down again next year. We're gonna have budget issues come spring of next year in the summer. So to me, this is a liability issue, the sidewalk. We have the money set aside for the, for the paving budget to do that. If at some point in the future, things aren't gloom and doom, and everything is bright and happy, and we can find, you know, our, our sales tax has increased, or our revenues are up for some reason, then we can add that money back to the paving or do another street. I don't have a problem with that. But I think just at this time, with what's unknown out there with COVID and everything else that's going on, I would rather see it come out of the paving fund as opposed to cutting back on equipment. You know, I, I think the city manager is doing an excellent job, and I know that he's kind of holding back on those, but I think there's things that we don't know that's gonna be out there come the end of the year, and even waiting, we may even have to cut more vehicles and other expenses that we had approved in the budget based on our funding sources, so.
So I don't disagree with your logic and the concern that you have for the budget. I, but what I, I don't think that I'm in favor of stealing from Peter to pay Paul. I don't want to take sidewalk roads resurfacing funds and put it into sidewalks. We have a sidewalk fund. I hear what you're saying. If we get into a, a problem next, if we get a problem next year, we're identifying, maybe at that time, we can say, okay, what, how much money do we have in the roads projects? Because we can't get it from where the city manager thought we could, or we run into an unanticipated problem. At that time, I think I would be willing to consider pulling some funds out of the road project going forward in, in any amount that's unused, but I don't want to confuse the two monies. I, I'm, you know, when those sidewalks were put in and the trees were put in, there was a lot of debate over how that was gonna work out, and I think we're, we're seeing some of that. I know if I, if I, Commissioner Colleti talks about a trail, you know, that sounds great, but I think all the trails are gonna be put way back, what's what I'm hearing. Commissioner Colleti, you know if the county, are they set on a date? Do they have that funded, that trail, or? I don't, I don't think they have, but is there something, no?
No, not that I know.
So I think most trail projects are gonna be pushed way back, years and years. So I understand where you're going, Commissioner Hartman, but I think right now, I'd rather pay for it out of the general fund and address the issue down the road if we run into a crunch. Maybe we can pull it from the roads end, but our roads need a lot of work, and it, and we've been struggling to get that done. So pulling that kind of money out of that, out of the roads is simply just gonna keep that, keep that ball, keep us behind the eight ball in the roads.
Okay. For clarity, just before we make a motion here shortly, hopefully, the item before us had a recommendation to fund from general fund reserves, which is very different than the general fund. So I just want to make sure we have clarity in the motion. I think what you're now saying is there's, either we pay from the streets, which is what Commissioner Hartman has recommended, or I think what you also said is that we could pay from general fund by deferring some other things, not from general fund reserves.
Exactly.
Okay, so just for clarity, I am not for, in any way, pulling this from general fund reserves. I, I could, I, I think there's merit to what both of my colleagues over here have said. I, I think Commissioner Hartman made a, some solid points. So, you know, I, I don't know, we'll see how the motion goes, but I, I, under no circumstances would be in favor of pulling it from reserves, because I just, I don't, I don't want to use reserves for this type of, this type of item, so. All right, with that, do I have a motion on item? Oh, one other thing I wanted to say, and then.
Mr. Mayor, a, a comment, please.
Okay, hang on, let me finish my thought, and then I'll come to you. I want to make sure this doesn't happen in the future, and I say this, obviously sidewalks are gonna erode, but a lot of this is root intrusion. And as I was driving by, all of that brand-new landscaping out in front of the corner of Sugar Mill and Forty-four, I haven't gone up there and looked at it really close, but it looked like a lot of those trees were planted really close to the sidewalk. And this was my first thought, is are we just planting a problem that some future commission's gonna deal with in fifteen or twenty years? So I know that's really, really in the, the literal weeds, but if we can try to make sure as we have new construction that we're not recreating this problem for some future commission to deal with. So I'm all about barrier, landscape barriers, but let's make sure they're appropriately spaced away from sidewalks so we're not gonna have, you know, fifteen, twenty years from now, we have the same problem, so. Commissioner Sacks, go ahead.
So this may be thinking way outside the box, but I, I see our topics for the December 2020 strategic meeting, AOB site improvements. We've been actually putting up with these roots for quite a few years. My wife and I like to walk the waterfront loop trail. I know this is a hazard amongst, honestly, quite a few on our sidewalks in, in the city. So I wonder, could we find funding if we plan to improve the AOB site? Maybe some of those monies could come out to improve this portion of the sidewalk. Is that a thought? Anybody?
I don't think we've budgeted any money for AOB site improvements.
The only thing we have for the AOB site, Vice Mayor, is if you recall, about a year and a half ago, we budgeted fifty thousand dollars for some of the improvements. We have spent some of this funding. I think we have maybe thirteen thousand dollars left, so that would not be, that would not be sufficient to cover the funding for this. This is about a hundred and twenty thousand.
For that section of tarmac?
For the whole sidewalk area.
Yep, and, and not only just the resurfacing, but actually, they got an estimate from somebody who's expert on tree to, to handle the, the roots of the tree that it's causing the problem.
Sure.
Okay. Hate to ask for a motion while I have a commissioner out of commission, but, but we're gonna do it. Do I have a motion on item six D?
I make a motion that we identified the street repaving line item to fund this project, resurfacing.
So I have a motion to fund this from the street resurfacing budget. Do I have a second? Not hearing a second, motion fails for lack of a second. Do I have another motion on this item? So we can do nothing, or we can make a motion to fund from reserves, or we can fund from the general fund by delaying some projects? Those are the three options. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I think we should send it back to the staff, have them relook at the problems to see if the extent of the problem could not be solved in a cheaper manner, perhaps in front of the AOB site. Some money could be used for that particular area. But I, I'm just uncomfortable with the, with the total dollar amount for that sidewalk. I've received a number of complaints on it, and I've been on it myself. And it needs work, but I don't think it needs a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars worth of work at this time when we haven't budgeted for it.
Commissioner Colleti, we have, the staff has spent quite a few times between maintenance, operation, and engineering, looking at this problem, and, and that's what they came up with. So it's not like they didn't take the time to investigate and find out the best solutions at this point. As you know, with roots going into a bike path or even the street sometimes, it, it's not gonna solve it a hundred percent. But as you mentioned earlier, this, this bike path was put down in, probably in nineteen ninety-four. So it's, it's over twenty, almost twenty-six years old, so. Again, I mean, we, we received the complaints from citizens and commissioners as well, and that's why we're addressing the problem.
So, so a quick question, kind of in that vein, is, is there, if we, I'm not necessarily a fan of this, but just a question, if we went just kind of where the, the actual problem is and just replaced the surfaces in that area, I mean, is it, an economy is a scale thing, that you probably end up paying almost as much as you would have just doing the whole thing, right?
Engineer, Peter, today, he's been the one working with me mostly. He thinks the, that whole stretch is about sixty-five percent damaged. My street supervisor says fifty, so between fifty and sixty-five percent damaged. And if you just did sections, you'd, the economy is a scale. You'd do less yardage and less tons for asphalt, so you'd be paying more for the materials, which you're really not gonna end up with that much of savings if you just did pieces. And then you'd have a, kind of a patchwork bike path along the, you know, it would look different.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Question of faith?
Sure.
Of faith, is, is the plan to elevate the whole scape and leave the roots in situ, or to, to remove roots?
We had, and he'll come back and actually show us the process if we get to go forward with this. We had our, we have a master certified arborist that works with us on trees, and he came out and showed us, you put, there's a root barrier you can put in, you put in to try to, you try to get the roots to go, you know, so they're not going across. And then you put this geo grid material down underneath the sidewalk to help them so that the roots don't go under the sidewalk. Because if you just pulled it, just cut the roots off and just report it, he said you could have the roots coming back in, you know, two to three years. So he did, he's recommending a process, and that's included in what we're anticipating is the cost. And that would, staff would be, we'd probably be doing that part in-house.
Thank you.
All right. Gentlemen, unless I hear a motion, we're gonna move on, and nothing will be done on this item.
I'm gonna make a motion. We table it and bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All right, I don't, I don't know that we need to vote on that. We just, no, we just want to take action.
I just wanna.
Yeah.
Take some kind of action on the issue.
All right, let's call the roll. We'll just do that. We got a motion, a second. Let's table this to the next meeting.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
No.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
No. All right, we'll bring that back.
Just for clarity, what are you expecting in the next meeting? What, what?
Well, I think, from what I'm hearing, there's a uneasiness with both funding possibilities. So we need to try to direct staff to whether or not we can find a better or a more clear way of where this money's gonna come from. In other words, what I guess I'd like to see, if I don't agree with reserves, I don't want to loot the streets because obviously you know the problems with that. So if we can borrow money from one area and then commit to pay it back, I, I just want a little bit more of exactly how we're gonna pay for this, because right now, the, the options presented don't appear to be reasonable. Maybe if the, not necessarily changing it, but having a plan down the road on how that money's gonna, then, how we're gonna pay back the streets, for example. In other words, I would want to specific, see a specific plan. If we're gonna borrow the money from streets, because I'm hearing that commissioners are not happy with the, A, the amount, or B, taking it from reserves, which I, I agree with, let's come up with a more clear way of, if we're gonna borrow the money from one place, how are we gonna reimburse that? So that's, that's at least what I'd like. I do, we're kind of stymied here, but I'd like to see down the road if we're gonna, where we, when we take the money either from reserves or the general fund, or from streets, or from wherever else, how are we gonna get that money back in? So I need to kind of see how that plays out next year.
I mean, I, I hate to spend so much time on the item, but I just want to make sure that I understand what the expectation for the next meeting. I have presented three options, and I, two of them I did not recommend. And I recommended the third one, which is I have items in the budget currently right now on hold that I will take the money from there. And then next year, I will budget the money for that item in the new budget. So that's, that was the option that I recommended.
I, what, what I think I heard is, I think it's just maybe some clarity around that and what those items are, and exactly how that will be repaid. And then if we wanted to do even streets, some clarity around, you know, these are the, you know, we're gonna be taking it from here, but we think we can make that up in, you know, next year, and here, you know. So I think just some more, some more clarity around those, those items, so. All right, item six E, Vice, uh, Commissioner Colleti pulled this.
Uh, this seems like a very simple, simple item. What it consists of is when Turnbull Development was originally approved, one of the streets has a cul-de-sac at the end of it. And it also has a one-foot-wide access strip across the end of it. These are not normally put in our PUDs and our development plans unless there's a very specific reason for it. Effectively, what it does is it says the, the property on the other side of that access strip can't use it and can't develop using it. So I would like to know why that was put there to begin with. Is there something in the Turnbull Development PUD that limits the amount of development that can come through the property? Is there something on that property where they didn't want access to it? I just think it's premature to just approve this until we look into some of these items.
Okay.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
If I can answer that, our staff did quite a bit of research into trying to find that answer, and we, there was just nothing definitive in the record of the, the various meetings where this project came up, the submittals and documents that are on the record for this, as well as interviewing staff who were here at the time and perhaps would have reviewed it and recalled why. it and recalled why that happened. So we could do a little bit more and maybe find something. Just based on what we've done so far, I think that's unlikely.
Okay.
So Brian, in plain English, and it's sort of here in the, in the staff report, but for everyone's benefit, does this help hurt or is indifferent to the proposed or potential development that's in the same area?
It hurts the potential for the property to the north to be able to do anything because they do not have legal access to the property. So this is what would be referred to as a spite strip. It's a one-foot strip of land that somebody else owns and controls and can say, you can't cross my property to get to yours.
Did you say spite strip?
Spite. That's kind of the slang, the slang term for it. So we would not do this today. So, but we just can't find why it was created, and unless this is removed, either by dedication of right-of-way or by easement, which is proposed, that land to the north is inaccessible.
So, so again, my question is, this, that we're, if this were approved tonight, that would be net positive for the land to the north?
Correct.
As it is, it's a net negative?
Correct.
It's a spite, if you will. Okay. Other questions on this item or comments?
A question?
Sure.
The large develop, well, I shouldn't say large, the development to the north is a dense suburban project?
There's a master development agreement that our staff opinion is that has expired, and so they would have to come back and go, go through the, the process from the beginning for a potential development.
At a cost and time expense to the city as well?
Well, the applicant would pay, submit their applications, pay for those, and then we would take it through the process.
Thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A question. Turnbull Association, do they own the ten-acre piece?
No. The, the name of the ten-acre piece to the north, the representative, the attorneys here, Mr. Scher, can, if you'd like him to answer that question?
Sure, go ahead. If you would just limit your comments to answering that question, though.
Yes, the owner of the ten-acre piece is NSBOHM Properties LLC. The party that is giving the easement is the owner of the one-foot strip. It's a different party.
And that's WERC?
That's WERC LLC, who was not the original owner of the strip, is they just, I guess they're the golf course people.
Okay.
Just one more question.
Go ahead.
Is the strip owned by the same owners as the Turnbull properties?
The Turnbull properties?
Yeah, the whole development, the whole PUD area.
The Turnbull Cove or the other one?
Done by the golf course.
Golf course.
I think they're the golf course owners. I, that's what I, that's what I've been told. I don't have any personal knowledge of that.
Done by the golf course. Their reason for wanting to keep it rather than dedicate it is they say they wanna keep the connectedness of all of their lands. I'm not sure I understand that rationale for it, but that's what we were given. So they've, they've agreed to grant an easement, which is proposed tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, go ahead, go ahead.
Motion to approve item EA dash one dash twenty.
Second.
Okay. No discussion, city clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner Clodie?
No.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
No.
Thank you.
Did he vote? Did you vote, Clodie?
Yes.
Oh, zoned out. All right. Item passed. Next item was item J, also you, Vice, Commissioner Clodie.
What we're asking for is to approve the special event, Christmas Coastal Market, which I have no problem with whatsoever. However, this past weekend, I attended the Classic Car Show, actually participated in it, and I was at the Flamingo Follies on two separate days, and I was really disappointed to see the lack of cooperation in people wearing masks. Less than fifty percent of the people out on the street, especially in the afternoon, when out of towners mostly come to these events, there really was not cooperation. Now, we've passed a ordinance in the past saying social distancing doesn't necessarily apply indoor or outdoor. Indoor, we say you must have masks. However, there was no social distancing going on out there for a good part of the event. What I would like to see is the city make an effort to attempt to communicate to the people coming in, whether there be signs out there saying you must social distance or wear a mask. I think we have to be a little proactive on this. As I'm sure you all recall, I'm not really in favor of masks, but with this virus going up and down and recommendations this way and that way, I think we should do everything we can to try to get people to become aware that they must wear masks. I don't have one on right now, but I'm six feet away from everybody, and I have it here. So I don't know what we can do, but I think we should have our staff look into it, whether at all the barricades such as at the Classic Car thing, we have big posters saying you must wear your mask, it's city property. I think we have to take that step.
Okay. All right. So do I have a motion on item six J? That motion could include some-
May I make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
It is really important to me. It is no surprise, maybe to some, that the simple piece of cloth may save your life, and I'm totally apolitical on this subject purely for medical reasons. There is new guidance by the CDC that says it protects others and it protects you, and still yet, some of us do not wear masks. And getting back to the guidance which just came out, they're recommending social distancing and the wearing of masks, indoors especially. So, you know, as much as when this scourge came out, I was extremely cautious. I don't think overcautious, because nobody knew what was going on. I, at the same time, though, I don't wanna stop and shut down everything again. I think Commissioner Clodie is right. If, if we can continue with these really nice events, especially towards Christmas time when, when people are, have just had it, although COVID hasn't had it with us, maybe a few more signs. I don't know what more we can do with, with what the governor has mandated now, that we can't force masks on people, but Commissioner McGurk had a, that was a good idea with those signs in stores. Maybe we just need more signs out there for these events. David Ray did a good job separating people. We need to get that message out more and more. I, God forbid, New Smyrna should become a hotspot. So far, you know.
Okay.
Just in my comments.
Okay, wish me good.
So we're kind of, this is about approving this, but, I mean, I, we can't make anybody wear a mask. We do have a mandate, obviously with no penalties. We're trying to encourage as strongly as we can for people to wear masks. My personal feeling, if you're inside, everybody should have a mask. If you don't care for it, it's at least out of respect for the people around you who do. If you're outside, when you're mingling amongst people, you need to wear a mask. I think we should just support wearing masks at all times if you're coming within relatively close proximity of people. If there's an event on Flagler or an event on Canal, you should wear a mask if you're walking in amongst people, strangers, people you know. This isn't complicated. Now, the problem is, we can, it wasn't, it was, by the way, it wasn't my idea, I don't, I don't wanna take credit for it, I just helped fund it. I don't know what we can have staff do. I know Commissioner Clodie, I'm not sure where you want, I don't know what, what more we can do, or how much we're gonna spend trying to convince people to wear masks. If they're not doing it, they're not doing it. I think it's more or less the business owners and peer pressure amongst us simply asking people to wear masks at all times. And the irony, of course, is not lost that you're choosing not to wear a mask right now, but I'm not sure what this has to do with this specific event. I don't wanna hinge it upon something staff does because we've directed staff by creating a mandate. We've done as much as we can already, and other than, I think, maybe looking to the businesses to be a little more aggressive about, but I don't know what more we can do. I guess the question is whether or not we're gonna support more events going forward when we know people don't wear masks.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve this event. That's not my intention, is to slow this down, but I just think, like, the donation you made was very good, person I came up with is very good. More signs make people more aware of it. You walk in the Publix, there's a sign there, wear your mask. When you walk onto one of our streets where there's a big event, maybe we could put a sign out there saying, wear your mask. I'm not in favor of any penalties or any enforcement in that, never have been, never will be, but sometimes people need to have real reminders, and if we could have staff come up with some ideas on more signing that could be put out for these outdoor events, I'm all for that.
Okay.
I think it's necessary.
So, I mean, I think that sign that we have commissioned Saul, and we paid for some, I mean, if we just took that same sign to Commissioner Clodie's point, if this is approved tonight and for future events that are approved, I mean, it's probably a worthwhile investment, maybe even applicable for reimbursement, to have some bigger versions of that banner form that can be attached to other things and/or, you know, standalone type displays of somehow, work with sign people that know what they're talking about, have some bigger versions of that sign, just so we have consistent branding. I think we're really playing in the tales of statistics here, though. I mean, you're gonna take a few people that are just forgetful or whatever, and, you know, you're not moving twenty percent of the population with, with that, in my opinion. I think, folks have heard, they have, they have determined what, what medical expert on Facebook they are believing, and, and they have made their mind up at this point. So it is, it is what it is. But I think it would be a worthwhile investment if staff can maybe arrange that if this event is approved, and then we can use for future events. So I'd say a de minimis investment for some signage and hopefully get reimbursed. Do I have a motion on item six J, gentlemen?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
City clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Clodie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item is approved, and staff will hopefully work with the vendors and see if we can get some additional signage out there. All right, next item up, seven A, the approval of a license agreement regarding the property at twenty-nine oh one South Atlantic Avenue. Brian?
Just a brief staff report. Kelly, if you could please pull up the site plan, which is exhibit D, the second page in exhibit D. This is approval of a license agreement to allow two parallel parking spaces and steps to be built in the east Nineteenth Avenue right-of-way. The property is at the southeast corner of South Atlantic and Nineteenth Avenue. It's a small apartment complex, it's a total of six units with, consisting of two, three-unit buildings. The current owner, Joy by the C, LLC, purchased the property in July and is planning on doing some improvements at the site, which include a pool, renovation of the units, complete site improvements, including landscaping, hardscaping, a new onsite handicap parking space. Kelly, if you could please scroll to the next page on that exhibit, as well as the addition of two proposed parallel parking spaces. The, this is in the R three A zoning district, which does allow required parking to be in the city right-of-way, if it's adjacent to the property. The, so just to orient yourself, here's, my light is not working here, but Nineteenth Avenue is kind of the east-west street, and then South Atlantic is the north-south. The material is poured concrete base with pavers on top. The parking spaces would be several feet lower than the site, so a small stairway of three steps is proposed, and that crosses the right-of-way line. Couple items that were brought up on this, there are some existing diagonal spaces on the other side of the property on Hill Street that were existing. The back of those spaces does encroach into the Hill Street right-of-way. Those were not included in this agreement, but those could very easily be added if, if desired for that encroachment. One other point, the, there was a concern raised, kind of not directly related to these spaces, but there's some new landscaping, some palm trees, question about the site distance. We did look at that, the particular type of palm tree and the location, we felt like it would be acceptable as proposed. So staff does recommend approval, subject to two conditions. First, that the agreement would not grant exclusive use of the right-of-way in this area, and second, that the agreement is recorded with the clerk of the court within sixty days of approval.
All right. Any questions or discussion by the commissioner on this item? Commissioner Clodie, I saw your hand, but we'll go to the vice mayor first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concerns are line of sight. I know you did check it out and approve it. The other was water retention. Will it cause a problem with flooding? I would have much rather seen pavers and not concrete if that was feasible. Maybe it'd be a little more permeable. Ordinarily, I would support it, but I still have a few concerns about it. And have there been any letters or any opposition from neighbors?
No.
No. You did look at traffic patterns as well, Brian?
We did. I mean, the areas, and people can park there now. Having the designated stable parking areas, I think it'll, it'll, they'll last a lot longer. It'll, the area looked a lot more attractive. As far as the traffic goes, you know, Hill Street is one way to the south, so the, the site distance with, over there with trees or anything is not really an issue because you don't have northbound cross-traffic. The impervious area is not increasing with these, the entirety of these improvements on the site, so it isn't old, it's, building's been there since nineteen fifty-seven, so it doesn't have modern stormwater facilities, but they aren't making the situation worse.
They're not.
They're not.
Thanks.
Clodie? Question?
Two of the items. I did raise the issue on the trees, and that's fine by me. I do believe we should treat the parking within Hill Street under the same standards as we're treating the parking along, along Nineteenth. Construction standards should be the same. Right now, it's a gravel parking area, so they're doing work in our right-of-way. They're proposing to put pavers in our right-of-way, and they should be constructed to the same standard. And if the city deems it appropriate, that'd be concrete underneath pavers. So it should be, and those standards should apply on both streets. Regarding the steps going down into the right-of-way, I just don't like any obstruction being built in our right-of-way, when for them to do those steps on their own property does not cost them any more. them any more money and does not interfere with their plan whatsoever. So, I just can't support the steps in the right-of-way, and I would like to see the standards applied to the parking on both streets.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion on this item? Have you discussed what Commissioner Colode just brought up with the applicant? Do you think that's a?
Not removing the steps. I do believe it could be built with adjustments to the steps to have it on the property. I think they show it where they like to have it, right in the middle between the two spaces, but I believe there are ways that could be done without doing that. So, that's no problem. We could pass that along to the applicant to not include the steps in this agreement.
Okay. I mean, it hasn't been decided, I just wanted to.
Yeah, it is possible.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion on this item, gentlemen?
Make a motion to approve LA-4-20 with the steps excluded from the agreement and including the two staff suggestions, recommendations.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Does that include adding the Hill Street parking spaces to the agreement?
No.
I withdraw my second.
Good clarity.
I mean, that could come back at a later time, right? I mean.
We could add it to this agreement. It's on the exhibit that's in there, so I think.
Okay, then we can include it.
I put my second back. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen. Okay, so that was a motion to approve that included the Hill Street, that removed the steps from the agreement, and with the staff recommendations, the other two criteria. So, that was a motion, that was a second. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item is approved, thank you. All right. The approval of the FEMA agreement for COVID-19, item seven B.
Our finance director could not be with us tonight, but basically, this is, it's a nationwide emergency declaration, and subsequently, it was a major disaster declaration authorizing the FEMA agency to provide public assistance program. I just don't want to confuse this with the reimbursement that we asked the county, so this is kind of separate. We, right now, we have approximately $115,000 in personal public equipment that we spent, so we will be submitting $115,000. We are expecting to receive the $980,000 from the county, probably either this week or next week. So, with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Colin, for clarity, different items, we're not double-dipping, right? Different costs.
Yeah, no, it's a different item.
Okay. Just, I knew that, just want to make sure everybody knows that. Do I have a motion on this item, gentlemen?
Second.
City Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item is approved, thank you. Item seven C, the COVID testing site, I believe we're looking to extend that potentially. Go ahead.
We have been approached by the emergency Volusia County manager that they would like to extend their lease at the city gym for another month. That was when we prepared this agenda. Today, I received another email that they are thinking even to extend it beyond that, probably to January 2021. Just to keep things in perspective, that might affect the mayor's fitness challenge. So, with that, we are thinking about, if that happened, that we will hold the mayor's fitness challenge at this facility and keep the testing site there. I could tell you this, this is probably one of the best things that happened to us during this COVID thing. I mean, just us employees, that the past two, three weeks, we have got so much benefit out of the testing site. Within 20 minutes, you have a result. There are so many people, the people there are, they like the site, they're doing 200 to 300 people, so my recommendation is to authorize staff to extend it probably to January right now. The request is December, but they just sent an email today that they are looking for January as well.
So, just real quick, yeah, this is obviously a priority over the fitness challenge. I wouldn't like to see that go away. I was already thinking we'd have to scale that back, figure out some other way to do that anyway, so we can certainly get creative on that and, you know, have staff work and figure that out. But this would be secondary to that, so it shouldn't even be a consideration. So, entertain a motion to approve the continued use, and I'd like to just give staff the approval to extend it as long as needed, or something to that extent.
Motion to approve the COVID testing site indefinitely as needed by staff.
Mr. Mayor?
Hang on, let me get a motion on the table. I heard a second, though. Okay, you got a second, go ahead.
Sorry, not enough time to have a discussion. I do support it as well, and Commissioner McGurk's motion, but the question was raised about separation between Council on Aging and Meals on Wheels activities from the testing site. Can we?
And we, Vice Mayor, I received the same email that you got from the mayor immediately, and we took care of that issue, so that issue has been addressed. And we, David Ray, has talked to the staff at the testing site, and my assumption that it's already been taken care of, so. David is here to answer any questions on that item.
To the satisfaction of the tenants that are there already, right?
We have not heard back from them that it wasn't satisfactory, so we'll double-check tomorrow as well.
Please. Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, I think we could just wrap that line, other directions besides that building, so.
Yeah, we did.
I have a comment, because I received two phone calls today about people asking about the testing site and where it was. So, maybe if we could get Philip to do something a little more on our website, that, number one, that it's being extended, and, you know, just exactly how to get, do the prequalification, you know, just kind of reiterate some of that stuff. Because that, a couple people called me today, and they were a little confused about where it was, and was it available to anybody in Volusia County or just New Smyrna, so. If he could do that, I'd appreciate it.
No problem.
All right, we had a motion, and a second. For clarity, that motion was to grant staff the authorization to extend the agreement as needed indefinitely, as long as they are interested. And we had a second. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that is approved. Thank you, Colin. Item eight A is a second reading of public hearing of ordinance would change the future land use of a large-scale comp plan amendment for the property at 647 Luella Street. City attorney, read the ordinance a second time by title only.
Ordinance number 10220, an ordinance amending the City of New Smyrna Beach comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of 16.7 plus or minus acres located north of Pioneer Trail, west of North Glenco Road, east of Luella Street, from city low-density residential and residential estate to city rural, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive land maps, providing for required transmittals, providing for public hearings, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
All right, Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, so basically, the applicant and the property owner has already applied for rezoning for this property, which was heard at the last meeting, two meetings ago. Now, the future land use is coming back for you for a second reading. Basically, we're looking at, it's a total of just above 16 acres. So, currently with the future land use that they have, they could build up to 76 gross units on this property. What they're asking for is to bring the future land use and down it to rural, which would make it one unit per acre. They do plan on the future to subdivide this property into two parcels. They want to do a five-acre partial for a family member and keep an 11-acre partial for theirself, but currently, they want to be able to put livestock on the property. And so, with the future land use that they currently have, and the zoning they had before would not allow that, so now with a resident, a rural zoning, and, I mean, agriculture zoning and rural future land use, it would give them the opportunity to put livestock on there and also reduce the density of that property. When it went to the planning and zoning board back in September, they voted seven to zero to give a positive recommendation to the commission, and staff recommends approval as well.
All right. It's a public hearing, any members of the public wish to comment on this item, this item only? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to adopt the one and only downzoning we have ever considered, gentlemen?
I'll make that motion.
All right. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
10220 is adopted. Bob, if only they were all that easy. All right. Item eight B, second reading of public hearing will grant a non-exclusive construction or roll-off service franchise to Precision Container. City attorney, read this a second time by title only.
Ordinance number 10820, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach granting a non-exclusive franchise to Precision Containers and Cleanup LLC to provide construction and demolition debris removal services within the City of New Smyrna Beach, outlining franchisees' duties, providing terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. I do have one change to the ordinance on line 252. It talks about the size of the lettering for the name of the company. It currently says four inches, or it currently says six inches. The city and applicant have agreed to four inches. So, that's on line 252. The six turns into a four.
All right. It's a public hearing, we'll open it up to the public to see, it looks like the applicant may be in your representation. Go ahead, that's your chance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I am Michael Lyons, attorney for Precision Container. We're asking the city commission to approve this ordinance and allow Precision Container to operate in the City of New Smyrna Beach. We do have a couple requested changes that are pretty small from what the city attorney just mentioned. Those two requested changes are Section 4A, line 91 and 92, and that's to clarify and add that each construction debris container pickup, rather than just the word "container." The ordinance at issue here that actually creates these franchise agreements specifically addresses construction debris containers, so we're asking that that just be in this particular franchise agreement as well. Additionally, in Section 4B, line 109, and that's to limit the books and records access of the city to during regular business hours. Currently proposed in the agenda, it's just open-ended on what time, we'd ask that that be restricted to regular business hours. So, we're asking the commission to approve this ordinance. The only thing that's actually before the commission tonight is the specific ordinance that's in the agenda.
So, I got the first one with the business hours. I mean, it says reasonable, so I feel like reasonable is when everybody's open, but what was the other one, what line number?
The other one was just above that, it's line 91 and 92. Currently, it just lists container, charge per container. Ask that some clarification be added that they're charging for each construction debris container.
Okay.
That's what the ordinance is directed at.
Okay.
Container in lines 48 through 50, you don't feel that's sufficient?
Container means open-top scalp type used for non-patriciable material or enclosed containers used with compaction devices of 10 cubic yards or larger. I think that covers it.
Can you give me that citation again?
It's Section 2 definitions, lines 48 through 50. Yours may be a little different, but it's subsection C defines containers.
I got you. So, the ordinance, which is Section 66-111, specifically addresses construction and demolition debris removal only. There is potential that recyclables are filled in similar containers that I think could fall under the definition in Section 2C, but not actually be regulated under ordinance Section 66-111.
I'd like to hear from city staff. It was my understanding that we had come to agreement on the terms of the franchise agreement, so this is new information.
Yeah, so here's my thought, gentlemen, y'all can do with it what you will, and we also want to open it for any other members of the public, but my thought is, I don't want to sit here and have a legal, have two attorneys debating line items. We got to figure all that out before it gets to this, so I'm not comfortable moving forward till we get all that hammered out off the dais. So, Mike, if you will, let me just open it up to the public, and then we'll bring it back to the commission. Any other members of the public on this item, this item only? All right, seeing none, I suspect it, yeah, gentlemen, my recommendation is we let attorneys talk to attorneys and not try to get into line, I mean, I think I followed it, but I don't know.
Make a motion at table.
Okay, we had a motion to delay this item, and a second. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
We need a date for that in order to keep the publication.
How long do you think you need?
Well, the next commission meeting is December 8.
Yeah.
I don't know, I felt like we had enough time last time, and here we are at the ninth hour, trying to hammer it out, so I would ask the applicant, how much time do you need?
I also thought we had sufficient time to get this worked out before and thought that we had, so I think the next commission meeting should give us plenty of time.
All right, we'll do it on the 8th. We have a motion to extend to the 8th, is that acceptable, a motion to extend to the 8th? All right, City Clerk.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just go ahead and get the two inches shaved off while we're in there, too. All right, ordinance, thank you, thank you both for being here. All right, 9A was postponed at the request of the applicant. That brings us to boards and commissions, which are none, which brings us lastly to, not lastly, but almost lastly, mayor and commission reports. We will begin with our new vice mayor, and then we're going to work our way this way and loop back, so you get to go last now, so, vice mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have very much to comment on tonight. I would like us to extensively, when it comes time, to look at our new transportation manual, and instead of having some squabbles and disputes about stop signs and things like that, that we actually develop a process, whether it be on an individual basis or a standard, that we use both our manual and the National MUTCD. I've already had a request on, believe it or not, Magnolia, that people are still speeding. A gentleman's pickup truck was destroyed because of it, and they requested another stop sign. So, with that in mind, I would like us to, as soon as we can, start talking about guidance for transportation, which brings to mind trucks. We've applied and approved signage for Flagler, which helps a bit, but then again, we have people getting tickets in their private vehicles for parking in the loading zones, so there may be some confusion there, and maybe some fine-tuning would help a lot on Flagler. We tackle the, we're starting to tackle a big problem, and I hope it helps, and that segues for me to the matter of large trucks in our city. Our roads are not, most of our roads are not designed for large trucks, and I hate to complain about my particular street, 8th Avenue, but oddly enough, I have delivery trucks, semis, I have work trucks that are not designed for this road. I would love to see no trucks on my actual avenue there, but I think we really need to look at that. When people complain about it, we should take it seriously, because it's a danger for pedestrians, it's a danger for, it's a danger for line of sight and other cars. Our city, again, is besieged by automobiles. But I'll leave that, and I just wanted to add, it's regrettable that we didn't have a Veterans Day celebration, you know, because of COVID, and, you know, our veterans are getting older, even our Vietnam veterans are getting quite old, and some of them feeble, but they're still here with us. And when I came over tonight, I saw the flags really blowing heavily in the wind, and it really reminded of the sacrifice that these men and women had given to our country. And the beautiful thing about the flags for me was, there was no politics tied to them. There were wonderful heroes tied to them, that were tied to this country, that make us able to do this sort of thing. And that really, you know, it fell on my heart that we don't have. And that really, you know, it fell on my heart that we don't have flags for these. You know, I don't care if you have a Gadsden flag or an American flag or any other type of flag, but the American flag is the one that is just a wonderful thing. My dad loved it, rest his soul, and I do, too. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner McGurk?
Thank you, Mayor. Did want to wish everybody, not a happy Veterans Day. What is? Yes, certainly honor the veterans. Next year, we will certainly have a service. Signs point to this virus. We're going to get our hands around this thing in the next three to six months, I believe. So hopefully, we turn it normal. Look forward to a Veterans Day next year. That would be fantastic. I just want to touch on the mask issue again. I think it's very important that us as leaders stress as much as we can to everybody to wear masks as often as possible, especially indoors and when you're around crowds outside. So I hope that we're all doing our part to foster that kind of leadership and make sure it's getting done. We've had some exposures around City Hall, and I am very happy that those are turning out well, including one very close to us. He taken a walk on the wild side over there, and he's back. So again, I want to thank everybody for the honor of serving you all in this community. The, and I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Be mindful, be careful, be safe, and most importantly, have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
And be well. You always end with.
Be well.
Be well. Every time we talk to Commissioner McGurk, he always says, be well. All right, Commissioner Hartman.
So I'll touch also on the mask issue. I've had several people, a couple people call me about, there are certain restaurants in town that are no longer wearing masks, they're servers. There are places of business that nobody inside, or the patrons are wearing masks because they know they can't be forced to. So I would like to challenge staff to give us some direction that we can give them. Is there, should we refer them to the Department of Business Regulations? Because my understanding was under the governor's order that that was going to be the entity that was going to do the enforcement of these types of things. So.
Specifically said that there could be no fines or enforcement. So reporting it to DBPR when the state has said they can't do anything about it.
Okay.
We need help from the state.
Yeah. So maybe we need to call some of our state leaders and see if we can't get a little bit of help there. The other thing was, we attended the community day over at the Babe James Center. Armateri did a wonderful job organizing that event. It was all outside. Everybody was well-distanced. Everybody was wearing masks. They had a lot of participants. Unfortunately, I think they could have had more. They had a lot of vendors. Unfortunately, I think they could have had a little more participation from the community. But she did a great job, all of her staff did, so I want to commend her on that. It was a well-presented event. A lot of good information out there for the community to grab, and some resources that they could actually get a hold of at some point in the future. We also, again, did another one of my little housing seminar meetings, dealing, whether you call it attainable housing, workforce housing, or affordable housing, everybody has a different definition for all of that. And, you know, where is that actually going? There's some work going on with the county. There's some work going on with others. And a lot of it has to do with us on a local level, on ways that we can maybe help with issues on density or help with issues on maybe staff reviewing some of these issues so it doesn't have to go through the whole planning and zoning thing like that. So as we delve into this a little bit more, I'm sure you're going to hear a little bit more from me since I have another four years to talk about this. So, you know, that will be on the radar, and we can have those discussions later. But it's a community-wide, I mean, this is a national-wide problem. You know, we have, and it's not, I think it's going to be compounded in the future to a point that we really don't realize it right yet. I mean, everybody now is, there's no evictions, you know, landlords are facing issues, tenants are facing issues. So I thank you for your support of the housing project that we approved earlier in the consent agenda. I mean, that's going to make a big step forward for some of the senior housing on the West Side. So I commend you guys for that effort. And as we go forward, I hope to bring you a little bit more information. If you've got your article of Florida Trend, last month's issue actually had a couple articles about affordable housing. That was brought up in this meeting, so if you can want to read that, you can, or get ahold of me, I'll send you the link. And actually, there was a report done in the nineteen nineties from someone who worked for the county housing authority, who kind of brought all these issues up back then, and nothing was ever done about it. It just kind of got put on a back burner. So I think we'll be seeing more about this in the few months or the months to come, you know, even in the near future. So I'll keep bugging about it. And to, you know, there's two times of the years that we always, you know, enjoy. You know, the Veterans Day is one of those things that I don't think any of us has any heartbreak about showing up for. Memorial Day is the other one. So with that, just kind of a plug, tomorrow morning at ten o'clock, the Kiwanis are going to do a ribbon-cutting out here with the Field of Flags. They're joining the chamber. There's going to be a small ribbon-cutting ceremony. And if you haven't had an opportunity to walk through the Field of Flags, you know, I'd encourage you, you know, if you can show up, show up at that time or even walk through that. I mean, it's pretty amazing to see all those names out there. And what I was told was, it's growing so large that at some point in time, they're going to have to look for a larger venue. There's that much participation in it. So, you know, if you have a chance to come in around ten tomorrow, I'm sure they would appreciate it. And again, thank the citizens of New Smyrna Beach for showing their support for me. I'll try my hardest to do my best. So thank you.
Commissioner Clody?
Well, now that I'm not vice mayor, I get more time to write down things I.
All right, we may just keep starting with him.
I have to remember to speak of, and never had time to write them down. So here I go. Flagler Avenue Parking, Loading Zone, and Truck Routes, we're making progress. We're ruffling a lot of feathers down there. We are going to have to put some effort into really looking at what changes we have to make. I have had a couple complaints that some of our signage is a little bit off, and some of our curb markings are not being too easy to discern. So I just asked the staff to look into that. But I'm getting a lot of positive comments on it also, so we're going in the right direction on that. I also look forward to implementing the capital improvement items we talked about and we included in our budget. I know we can't do them all at one time, and I am a little impatient, but I'm sure we'll get them all taken care of. Subject of Veterans Day, yes, there's a beautiful field of flags out there. There is one that has my father's name on it. That is the same as my name. It's not me. So I just want to mention that. On Veterans Day, we did not have our program. However, I attended the ceremony that VFW had at their place over on Sunset. It's a very nice ceremony, had all the same features we have, just a little bit smaller audience. They also had done it earlier at the cemetery out on Glenco. So I applaud them for that. One of the tasks that was given to the neighborhood council was to meet with the various commissioners and get some ideas as to where we should be going and discuss with them what they should be doing. I found that very helpful. I obviously did meet, and I look forward to when some of those items can be discussed. And the last thing kind of caught me by surprise a little bit. I made a inquiry of our city manager only to find out then, because of my curiosity, that the old county courthouse building is being renovated to handle the existing motor vehicle type aspects and tax pay. I wish I had known about it sooner because I would like to know their plans and how they're going to handle the remaining properties and make sure it fits in with our desires. I wish they had talked to us or told us about what they were doing. So I'm going to bring that up with our county representatives. So we're not, so at least I'm not finding out in the end. I don't know if everybody else knew that. But that's a, it's an area of cooperation I would like to expand upon with the county. So thank you for your time, and thanks, everybody, for the last two years. I'm not going away yet.
All right. Did you get a phone call? Did somebody see the flag and think that maybe you had? Just making sure you're okay?
I did get a phone call that said somebody saw it. I couldn't find it myself.
Okay. All right, so a couple of things. So first, I wanted to say on the Field of Flags, I couldn't agree more. I actually, I didn't make it over on Veterans Day, but I had come over on, for some reason, I was inspired and came over on Election Day and walked through the Field of Flags because it just, I don't know, just resonated with me that those, the folks represented there that have fought, like this is one of the primary freedoms that they fought for is our ability to hold elections. So one day, I guess, others may have to fight to be able to count those elections, but for now, we're at least still having them. So the events, I wanted to say, we've got numerous. So this is a trying time, obviously, and things are changing very, very rapidly. And we have numerous events like Veterans Day that some are city control events, like the Christmas parade, that we have heavily modified. It's going to be nothing like it has ever been. We have other events that are not city events, but everyone thinks they are. Veterans Day is a great example. I got pinged, I'm sure you all did as well, on Veterans Day, asking me why we had canceled Veterans Day. I said, well, I didn't cancel Veterans Day. I get invited to the event. I get invited to speak at Veterans Day event. So I guess my challenge to staff would be, I think we, and I heard, I haven't validated this, and it may have been an exaggeration, but I heard that there were, you know, hundreds of people standing outside of the Brandon Center on that morning. Now, again, that came off social media, so it probably means ten, but let's call it hundreds. I guess my challenge to staff would be, people are seeking information. I get pinged routinely on stuff that it's like, I mean, the Christmas parade. I got asked earlier today about the Christmas parade. And it's like, I thought, I mean, we had settled that a long time ago, what we were doing. But I don't know that the public is getting that information because we're talking to twenty people at most right now, twenty-five. And so my challenge to staff would be, even if it's events we don't necessarily control, so images comes to mind. You know, we didn't cancel images. The organizers said, hey, we're not doing images. But I think we have to try to help be the mouthpiece of getting the word out. I don't want to take the, you know, all the blame, if you allow me to use that term, for being the bad guys that canceled all the events, especially the ones that we didn't actually even cancel. But I think we do want to make sure we're trying to help communicate the changes that are out there. And then I think we probably at some point should maybe have a conversation about some events, and do we want some of those to be, you know, more of a partnership and official city events? You know, I know in many other communities, events like Veterans Day, Memorial Day, they are run by, organized by the city in conjunction with the veterans organization. So not for discussion of the day for some future time. But anyway, I just would challenge us to make sure we're getting that information out there. It breaks my heart to think that some veteran got out of bed, came here thinking they were going to show up to the same, you know, ceremony they always have, and feeling like the city had just totally abandoned that, like literally didn't have signage out. So it happens. I didn't think to bring it up before, so it's on me as much as anybody, but hopefully, we can fix that and not let that happen again. On the mask issue, Commissioner Hartman, I've had a lot of the same emails, I'm sure. You know, I can't tell who's emailed who. But what I've told people on that is, you know, you vote with your wallet. You, you know, if a business isn't, you know, to me, and I said this months and months and months ago, you're a business owner, Commissioner McGurk, you know, there are businesses that are known for certain facets of their customer service. You know, let's take a Chick-fil-A. They're known for their customer service. The Dairy Queen, known for customer service. You know, this is, I believe it's going to be for the next, you know, until we figure something else out, this is just going to be an element of customer service. This is going to spread. You're going to get, you know, reviewed on this on all the platforms of, you know, and there will be, there'll be consumers that seek out businesses that don't tell them what to do and that don't encourage this. And then there'll be many consumers that are very concerned about this and that seek out organizations and businesses that cater to and make them feel very safe. And so, you know, that's been my response because frankly, outside of that, there's very little that we can do. I mean, especially in the regulatory environment that's been set forward by our leadership in the state. You know, there's just not a lot that we can do at this level. But consumers certainly can let businesses know what they support by their purchasing habits. And then the last thing, and I was going to mention this earlier or later, but I'll just mention this now. I know we've got this scheduled for December tenth. I have something that has come up that will, I don't know that it's going to conflict, but I'm afraid it's going to conflict for at least a portion of the tenth. I don't know exactly when yet. I hate to do that. I'm proud to report, there's been very, very few, you know, conflicts that I've had as a working professional, still manage to keep these things pretty straight and always be present. But I didn't know if it would be an extreme inconvenience for the commission or staff to consider looking at the, either the next day or the day before, or the ninth or the eleventh to hold this, to hold this meeting. The ninth is right after one of our commission meetings. Or, you know, the eleventh is a Friday, so it's a Wednesday or a Friday. Or if we care to, we can leave it on the same day. I'll be here for as much as I can. I just may have to step out and take a remote meeting. Any issues with having staff look at the ninth or eleventh? Does that conflict with anybody? Go ahead.
It will probably be a conflict on the eleventh.
Okay.
But I would have to look at my calendar.
Okay. But ninth may not be?
May not be.
May not be?
Eleventh by now.
I mean, you're here on the Tuesday and the Thursday, so maybe you might not, maybe you're here on the Wednesday.
Wednesday is probably available.
Probably, okay.
And the other day probably isn't.
All right, so let's do this. I won't put anyone on the spot. If you just share with staff, and then if it works and everyone seems okay or the majority, you know, not even majority. If it's okay for everyone, great. If not, then it's my conflict. I'll miss what I miss, and everyone else can carry on, so. And that was all that I had. So if you all can just let staff know, go ahead. Or do you want to speak to it now?
No, not to that. I was just going to raise something I forgot.
All right, go ahead.
It has been tradition that we usually, our last meeting in December is when we bring a token gift for our commissioners. I just didn't want anybody to, and staff members. So I just wanted to make sure that people remembered that because of people. Oh, I forgot. So, and the gifts, I don't need a gift. If there's a gift, make it a token gift. Please don't go out there and spend any significant amount of money. But we usually give some kind of token Christmas gift to last meeting. If you're going to do it, you bring it to the meeting. That'll be the eighth. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you for the reminder. All right, with that, next item up is, sorry, I lost track. Who comes first? City manager, right? Yeah, city manager, go ahead.
I have provided a list of items that I think they're important for us to discuss on the ninth or the tenth. The first six topics is items that I have. I have not received any items from anybody except from Commissioner Hartman. So the bottom ones, they were suggested by Commissioner Hartman. So I think if you look at the first six, I think they're very. So I think if you look at the first six, I think they're very, in my opinion, I think they're very, it's a top priority for, I would assume, for the commission and for the staff as well. They're all items that need some discussion. And I was going to leave probably the end of the day for the commission to discuss any items that they might have. So it'll be like an open agenda at the end of it. So it's supposed to be from nine to four, but we could go to any time that you guys desire to do so. So I would say from three o'clock on, it would be any item for the commission to discuss. So if you are okay with these items, we will prepare the agenda as so. So if you guys could have, give us the green lights, that these are the items you want, or you want to add to it or take out and add some item to it. But I have not received any items from anybody except from Commissioner Hartman, so.
So when you're saying these items, are you saying the one through six or all the way including his list?
Even his list. I mean, if you, if you, if you guys want to pick all of it, some of it, I mean, just let us know which ones so we could have some information provided at the meeting.
So, yeah. I'm trying to think, some of these are going to be quicker issues. Some of them, we could probably talk all day on the one issue. So, you know, I don't know if we can get through this, I don't know if we can get through this whole list. But, yeah, I'm okay with everything on this list. I may have a few things to send over, but I can also address them in the open time. Any, yes, go ahead.
Well, I looked at the list. It is pretty all-inclusive. I do have a written list, and it looked to me like they're kind of redundant. So I don't think there'd be any great change for me.
Okay. The only thing I would request is if someone does have items, if you can, via the city manager, get those to the rest of us so we can have time to be thinking on that in advance of the meeting. So if it's not on this list, I'll commit to doing the same. So if it's not on this list, I can be thinking about it before just being caught flat-footed on some, you know, out-of-the-blue issue.
Yes.
If I may, at this time, bring it up for discussion, thoughts. Please add it to the list, call it. A fire traffic light for Station Fifty-two. I know there may be a remote possibility that we could find it feasible. Maybe we could find the funding for the next, for the next budget. Hopefully, we'll get fifty in place. And I think this is a major priority for public safety. Have thought that for six years now.
Okay. All right, I think we're good to go. We'll go with this for now. If other items trickle through, send them, make sure we all have them at least, and then we'll just go through this. And honestly, about the order we have, I think the affordable housing and homeless probably some overlap if you combine those two, but. All right, other items?
Thank you.
Any questions for the city manager or anything else in his submitted report? Hearing none, city clerk, report?
No reports, sir.
Thank you again to you and your team. You deal with a lot of stuff during elections. Most of the public don't know the kind of crazy stuff you have to deal with and the, you know, she stepped on my sign kind of stuff. And so we appreciate you dealing with all that mess. So thank you.
It's our pleasure.
City attorney, any report?
No report.
All right, meeting adjourned.